All right, let's go ahead and stand for the flag believing in peace. Religious to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. Hello to all.
Have you got anybody to take the secretary's job yet, or?
No, not yet. Would you be a willing volunteer?
Would you be an unwilling volunteer?
I might be an unwilling volunteer for tonight, okay?
Please. Thank you. And we'll go from there.
Hey Larry, just tell them they gotta learn how to read cursive.
You what?
They have to learn how to read cursive.
I know cursive.
Well, I don't, I'll tell you right now, I know, I don't do internet or anything like that. I'm not, I'm computer illiterate. So, I know you have drop boxes or whatever you call them, but if you want to talk to me, call me.
That means, that means nothing to me too. I can't, I can't do that.
I just want to let you know that.
Okay.
We'll let Steve set up and then we'll go ahead and do roll call.
You want me to do the roll call then too, then, or what?
I can run the roll call.
Okay.
Doesn't, yeah, okay. Who usually does it? Does anybody notice that on our agenda, it's for last, it says October 9th?
Yeah.
Today is November 3rd.
I don't know who made it.
Oh, that's a typo.
So, we'll fix that on the adoption or amendment of agenda.
Fix that.
Okay, let's see here. I'll go back to my thing. All right, roll call. All right, Aherne here. Garber.
Here.
Martyr. No longer. Luck? Not here. Steve Weaver.
Here.
In Dunbar. Wood Dunn? I don't know who Dunson is. John Tarris is not here. Mr. Riley.
Yo.
All right, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
I have a five for a forum.
Yeah, there's ninety people on it, that's the majority.
I'm gonna have to get a new, a new attendance list. All right, so.
I move where you excuse the absences.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Roll call accepted. All right, adoption or amendment of agenda. That's where I guess we have a typo on our agendas. It's October 9th. Need to correct that for November 13th, 2024.
I have something left to add to that.
All right. Anything to add?
Under new, new business, professional planner.
Professional planner.
What was that, Steve?
Under new business, a prof, item eight or item one, professional planner?
Adding to the.
Adding to the agenda. All right, anything else we want to add to the agenda? Are we good there?
Can we just, under E, can we please spell regarding?
The proper way? Oh, I forgot you were a small D.
Jane, how about you?
I've been whining about that for the last two years.
A G.
You are the proofreader. What can I say?
I'm a proofreader.
I, you know, I don't have that talent, so I appreciate yours.
When the master plan comes around, I'll be proofreading.
You're gonna get a hard copy just for that purpose.
Okay. I'm ready, I'm ready.
You don't want to rely on me for that.
I'm ready.
Now I have to remember how to spell it. Damn autocorrect.
G A U R D, right?
G A R D.
G A R.
No U.
No U.
We're not guarding anything.
It's not U and it's not I.
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll be guarding chickens eventually.
We're getting there.
Okay.
All right, anything else for the, on the agenda that we need to make changes on?
I think we adopt the agenda with the addition of the correction.
Support.
And adding professional planner under new business.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And motion carries on that. Can you hear me okay, Larry?
Pardon? What's that?
Oh, was it, are you being, can you hear me, or are you just?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were being funny.
I can hear you.
All right, moving on. Approval of meeting minutes from September 11th and October 9th. I think we got a copy of those. Is there anything you want to go through on that, or anything that we need to make any changes, or we're good on that?
I don't have anything to add.
You good? Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to accept the approval of the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, awesome. Beautiful. Okay, item E. Citizens' comments regarding agenda and non-agenda items.
We informal?
What's that?
We informal? I'm serious. I signed it.
Aye.
Hello Larry, on the planning commission. Glad to see you there. The city cannot, I've been, I guess, Tom, Tom and everybody earlier, I've been here a year and a half and I know the city can't. You're a key component to keeping the city running. You are a welcome sight on this commission. Your knowledge and what you, everything you're involved in is a direct effect to the positive for the city of office. So, I appreciate seeing you here.
We appreciate him and him here.
Anybody else would like to speak for a minute? You're here.
Do you want me to speak?
You can. I would just throw your sheet down. I mean, you're new to the, I mean, I just know you as a neighbor.
Yes. Hi, I'm Amber. I born, raised in Memphis. I bought my grandparents' house, John and Jean Royson, right down on Potter Street. Yeah, so I've been living back here since November 2020. I'm married, I have two kids. I'm an attorney, so I moved to Knoxville, Tennessee, went to law school. Now I'm back here. I practice in Emily City. I do primarily property law, but a little bit of probate, just kind of anything that the department seems to help with, but my primary practice has been property. So, Mr. Dunbar reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and was like, hey, you know, we'd be, it'd be nice for you to, you know, maybe get involved and see how things operate, just because I have a history, my bachelor's degree is in politics. So, I figured, you know, my kids are getting to be a little bit older, so I can start leaving them home with dad and get involved a little bit. So, I'm just here spectating, seeing how things operate and happy to be of any assistance.
Amber, that's excellent.
Yeah.
More my heart.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I was telling you, but we talked about that on a couple different occasions.
Yeah, absolutely. I have my business cards. I can pass them off to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Please do.
Yeah, hey, glad to meet you.
We all gotta stick our oar in the water wherever we are, you know, if you want to have a civilization where we're not running around tearing each other's faces off, get in there and do a little work too.
Right, right.
Really, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Especially with an attorney background, that's always a valuable opinion.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I read a lot of, I want to say boring things all day long, so sometimes the dry material, you know, somebody who doesn't have experience in that, it can be hard to read, so if anybody here can help, they can come out.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You read dry material all day and then you come on these meetings, it's really gonna be boring.
Well, I might disagree with that. I think, I think we've had some pretty good conversations here over the last couple of years.
I don't think we're really boring. We're not boring.
Maybe.
You know, we just, we just crafted chicken legislation. I mean, you know.
Oh, see, I'm.
We're on cutting edge.
Did it fast?
I, I mean, they suggested amendments last night, Senator Tim, and he said they look good, so come back up on the council meeting. I'm the council rep, by the way, from city council.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have lots of good stuff going on.
Yeah. I've just been doing a ton of solar panel contracts. Hey, you wanna talk about dry? That's hard stuff to read, but we get through it, so.
The issue locally, you know, the solar farms and winds that we, the issue lately, I got a little involved, the city did too, and we're concerned about how that's gonna be able to see.
Yeah, we've seen a ton of them up in LaPierre, Tuscaloosa, Sanlit County. I mean, it's been, any, any property they can get, or, you know.
Eminent domain.
Yep.
And, and removing all the zoning control. We're sitting on this commission, that's, that's what our real fear was, and then somebody coming in for addresses when that legislation was out and kind of schools that we needed to be aware of.
Sorry, my writing isn't the greatest, though. I'm trying to scribble. Thank goodness we have Larry with cursive. I can read that. If I can read a doctor's note, I can read Larry's writing.
That whole school, you got that.
You're, yeah. Penmanship, that's all that matters. I can get through it. Okay, moving on. Communications. I don't know if you have it in your pack. I received a letter from Riley Township. Not that one.
Yours, from Riley.
Right, from Riley Township. That they are notifying us of the approved, of their approval to the distribution of their 2024 master plan draft for us to review and comment. Says it was at their, October 8th, regular township board meeting. And it says the comment and review period would remain open until November 20th. You can access the draft. Unfortunately, I didn't have the time to do it. I can get it downloaded on their website. I'll touch base with them, see if they can get one mailed out to us. Also, the other communications we have is that St. Clair County, well, this one says Thursday, so this is tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
I know we got this in the mail. I know we just got this in our packet over the, over the weekend. But what I understand from Amber and Donna, that if you are interested, you know, it's an upfront cost, and you just submit it to Donna for reimbursement if you choose to participate in the planning, and St. Clair County's a planning commission. And that's at Goodles Park. All right. Like that. Moving on, new business. And Mr. Weaver, you say professional planner, even though I can't spell.
Yeah, I gave you a couple of pages. I left on the table there. You can read through that. It's kind of self-explan, the cover letter was.
This one?
Yeah, to Karen, I think it's Donna's your last name. And as you know, prior discussions is working through, we're trying to get this master plan complete. We have a couple of areas that we really needed some advice on. One of them was the reconciling all of our road ordinances. So that this condominium development, suburban development, what our specs say in our ordinance are actually reflecting, at the minimum, county, you know, it shouldn't state anyway.
Right.
And I full copied various relevant pages in our ordinance book to lay out for her, you know, I explained what we were looking for. There was like, there's a couple of charts in our ordinances, you know, street type, electric streets gotta be eighty feet wide, and some of the stuff that we were looking at trying to reconcile with that condominium development, they just wasn't gonna wash.
Right.
Because it's kind of ambiguous, the titles, I don't know, it just seemed like some of the dimensions are off. So, we engaged Karen. I've spoken to her on the phone a couple times and texted with her, and that's on her desk now. She's reviewing it. And there was another issue that Donna sent for her to look at. If you recall, I requested we approve $500 stipend as kind of the retainer. They have some pretty set rates that they use, you know, it's like sixty bucks an hour, or projects or whatever. So, she was guiding up to say, here's five hundred bucks, see what you can get done for us, and maybe we can start building a relationship, and at least have someone else look at this road thing. We've been talking about it forever and we're going nowhere with it. This has gotta be resolved, you know, for our recommendation to council and getting that code right, so we're not gonna have any more problems with future buildings going on. So, anyway, that's what that's, that's about. I'll keep you in touch with her, give you her contact information. And I'm just waiting. I asked her to, as soon as you had reached that $500 limit, send a invoice to Donna. She will pay that $500, so we'll see what we got, and maybe we can, you know, go forward from there, with some help on some other issues that we might have with our overall code.
Is this the Karen that we have been talking about? Is this the person we've been talking about who was gonna put all the sections together?
No, no, different person.
Well, who?
No, Eric recently brought me this contact. I don't know how Eric knew them, but she's, she's worked in Richmond under another guy who was gonna retire, and so she's got quite a bit of experience. She works for other, other municipalities and so forth. So, I, I just contacted her, you know, after Eric passed on her information, and just picked it up from there.
So, we're paying her and this other person?
Yes, those are two different things, two different issues. The other person is generating the rough draft.
Of the master plan.
Of the master plan. She's putting together layouts, she's laying out the text, she's, you know, going through the pictures, the maps.
And we're paying her $500, but that's a flat $500.
That is for putting together the rough draft. There will be additional costs depending on how many you want to print.
Right.
Steve, is this then pretty well done then?
What?
This ma, your master?
No.
Oh, it's not?
No, that's, we're, we are going to revisit that issue again tonight, and hopefully we will make some more progress. But we'll, it's on the agenda, Larry.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll get to it. But that's what that is. So, you can see what I said on the book. And if anybody has any other ideas for that road stuff, I tried to get everything that was pertinent. You know, there's some in the condominium ordinance, there's some in other parts of the code.
Right.
You gotta do that dry stuff, you know, wind it all up, and try to make it make sense to the person I'm asking to take a look at it. But I, I think she's, she's got some talent and experience in it, so what, what I've been trying might just be a much easier process for me. We'll see.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, I'll, I will follow up with her on the next, probably tomorrow, just ask her out, just.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I need to read this to understand. I'll do that.
Larry, you've already read all that code a hundred times, I bet. It's just, the only thing different there is the cover letter I wrote, trying to explain what we needed.
All right.
I think you know it better than anybody here.
Spin around. All right, moving on to unfinished business. The master, we're reviewing the master plan. Now, I have it in here. I see the team. He said you're working with Terry on that. And the latest one I've seen. Going to it. The sections two and three were, were pulled apart by Mr. Dunbar.
They were emailed to me, and it appears that you can open them. I don't know what format. It was PDF or Word. And I did forward those to Terry at that time, which was not too long ago. So, she is in possession of that right now.
Okay, good. I know we discussed it at the last meeting.
She also has in her possession for some time now is.
The original?
The, all the sections that we all went through, rewrote, re-drafted. And so, we have section three, existing land use, is in her hands. It's a structure transitive. This is all text, mind you, that's all.
Right.
Section five, goals and objectives. Six is future land use. Seven is zoning planning. And then we had that one last section that we still have to approve as a body, but it's the implementa, implementation matrix, I think they call it. You know, what's ongoing, what's future, that chart. Shouldn't be too hard to do. I've talked about it a couple times. I got, I got all that ready to show you, but we got other things to do. That's gonna be an easier part. So, that's what we have, Mr. Chairman, is I believe, most of the text is actually relating to those eight separate parts here.
Right.
It's done and in its, you know, rough form for the first draft. However, we still are gonna have to produce an index page.
Have to update the cover page with.
Any other appendixes we may want to have on there. And then, one of the most critical things is we need to have someone take ownership of getting these maps off the ground, and what maps we want to include. So that we can do those graphics, and we can, we have a, I brought a couple of them. We'll look at them for discussion wherever it goes, but you know, we need to absolutely have our zoning clear on the next map that goes in the planning commission, master plan. That's, I don't know, I tell you, causes problems.
Do we have the?
Well, this is where we, we need someone to just drill down on all this. I mean, you have, and you know, I can to a degree, and I have somewhat, but right now, I really would like someone else to take point on this. I'll assist, but you know, this, that one up there is, is in our master plan. But again, remember, this one was done in 2012. So.
2012 or 2015?
Whatever.
It's there.
So, we need to get, you know, other, some of these templates are probably available. We can get them. I'm not the graphic artist. I'm not gonna be able to sketch out the boundaries, do the color coding and all that. I mean, I just really need someone to really take this on and label all these things, the rough thing, get us all to agree on it. There are still about ten or twelve points that were listed in this last master plan. I don't have them in front of me, of things that we need to double check, because we have to make sure the, the industrial zoning was changed on this one last kind of round. That's not really reflected on that map. That has to be accurate. Our central business district, there is a change in that too, if I'm not mistaken, going down Piles Street here, I guess, in front of library. So, there's, you know, all those details, and then we have, you know, this future land use map, you know, that would be good to have in there. Any other kind of graphic like that, and also.
I know I had, I know I had maps in here. I don't know what happened to them.
Well, let's, let's just take it like we're starting from scratch again. This is a new project, and this is one that we need to attack it. We've got a lot of other stuff out of the way, so again, however it gets done, just start like we know nothing.
Okay.
But the girls in the office, I think it'd be great, in the master plan, I got this from McComb County. Went down there, found my way to where I had to finally. But if we can produce a map, this one has all the property numbers on it. This is, you know, we got half in St. Clair, half in McComb.
Correct.
But to have this map in our master plan would be a very nice reference point, and the ladies should have this map up on the wall. In fact, they're asking to have that out there. I got one from McComb. It was a little bit different, but those are two other avenues. Maybe they can help us with other templates or maps, I don't know. But this one, you know, I know where I got it and so forth, and, but I'd like to see that, you know, you, just to be part of the master.
So, we got, so this is at the county level. We can get that from the county.
I did get that from the county.
Right, I'm saying, but I'm wondering if we can get it in, you know, like a PDF or a document.
Well, that's what I'm wondering too, Tom, and that's what I'm trying to get some people to help me with.
Okay, if you got a contact person, I can call them up, and I can see if we can get it. Because you got that from them, registered deeds?
I would have to review where it's, yeah, I'd have to review. There's so many places I've been going to, I can't keep it straight. I just sort it out as general now, as far as the discussion is, we have to do maps.
Definitely.
And so, we have all the texts. I got somebody's ready to put it all together. So, what do we need? We need the maps. We need to double check a few details. We need the index page. And then we can start thinking about, let's print. And the sooner the better. So, this is what's holding us up right now.
Okay.
Totally holding us up. We have some other examples, some maps. Again, I don't know what's information's on it. It's got, this is GIS. It's trying to sketch out what I thought the boundaries were for the central district and so forth. And this, this has got part of, you know, again, we have St. Clair County. We gotta get that half. So, we have this one to look at. Again, these were old ones. This one, I think I got, yeah, this is the one from St. Clair County. They do have the property numbers on there, and they printed two or three different kinds, so I finally got what I wanted, you know, just the way that they can lay them out. But it's not that hard for them to do. They got that big plotting machine. So, once you get in the right office, they're very helpful.
Right, if they got it on, if they could print it on the plot, it means they have to have it.
They can do it.
They haven't like, find a copy?
The thing is, we gotta go, and we gotta get it done.
We gotta get it from them.
So, this is the, the north part of town. So, you know, we could actually have one side by side, one over the other one, whatever we wanted to do. But just for people coming into the city office, especially we have a new bigger one, those two nice maps, that would be a big contribution the planning commission could do to just make things better. And then we could put a copy, shrink a copy down, if it's feasible. I don't know if the small numbers won't show up, but if not, for the planning commission, while we're working on the maps, I think it's a very good idea for us to do this. Something that's been talked about for a lot of years, and we're in a position to do it now. If something gets hot on the trail, let's just throw that in the mix. It's not gonna be that much more. This is the last one I have that I've been looking at. I think this was a future master plan? Oh, no, this was, yeah, vision map. And we should do that too. It'd be nice, you know. When we got that, all those zoning maps done, we can see what property's empty, calculate how much empty property is. Amber can run those numbers for us, you know, in, as an assessor. So, let's see what we're looking at. I mean, that should be part of our vision statement. People looking at that master plan, well, how much land's available to build on? How much is in commercial? How much is residential? How much is in multiple residential? So, those are, those are things that need to get done, and time to do is now. I mean, there's no other real parts that require a lot of our time. And being as we spent two years getting here, I'd really like to cross finish line and make this go. You know, I don't want to keep coming back and talking about it anymore. We need to get this done, and I don't, don't mean to sound.
Or no, it's getting exhaustive, is what it's getting.
But this is, this is time, it's time to do that. This is now. It'll be good for all of us, get it done.
I think for some of those maps, I mean, Riley Township is in, is in St. Clair County, so I can touch base with Riley Township's planning commission, see where they got their maps from, as well, and can pull them off of St. Clair.
That'd be great. You start reaching out, and Chief Doug's very helpful with Riley.
Yeah, I'll call, if Doug's here tonight, I'll go talk to him too, because he's on the planning commission for Riley.
So, could I ask everybody, what maps do you want in the master plan? Let's get a, let's get a target. What do we need in the master plan? We need a zoning map.
We need a zoning map.
The zoning map needs to be updated.
Steve, that's the zoning map that we have now, right?
Correct. Well, for 212, for 2012.
Well, I know, that was, that map was done by Wade Trim in 2015, actually. The zoning, the, the master plan was done in 2012, but the zoning to the master, the master plan to the zoning was done by Wade Trim in 2015.
This one?
Yes, that's actually when I was mayor. That was done, and I think it was finished up when Eric was mayor.
It's got GIS in the corner of this letter to McComb County Department of Planning. So, does that mean they just got the template from them or something?
Well, yeah, they made that up, and we approved, we approved the zoning of that, the, of the master plan. I'm, I'm sorry, with the, and the master plan itself, then we changed our zoning to the master plan, and that was the result of that.
So, this is the one they got on the file right now.
Yeah, now, I, I think you're changing some of the zoning now, because the, where the condos are, I changed from R1 residential to RM multiple. And that's, of course, not on there now.
Yeah, that piece right there.
Yeah, now, I don't know if you changed anything else on the zoning.
No, no, yes.
That may be the only change you gotta make there.
And now, there's industrial too, that I think that we needed to, that needs to be double checked. At least there's this piece up on the north end of town.
Okay.
That might be going back to residential or one way or the other. And then there were some pieces along Mill Street, on the other side of the river from Donato's.
Well, yeah.
That was actually.
I thought that was changed. I think that was changed.
I don't know. These are all unknowns to me, because I cannot get any answers, and I've looked at it a hundred times, and I don't know. That's why I need someone to pin it down.
I don't know. I gotta pile that at home. I may go through, see if I can find anything on it.
I've, I've only got two years worth of pilot. I hate to set you off on that. That's why I'm hoping that someone you can drill down on and get a few contacts can start.
I'll talk to.
Get, get the skill set to do this. I mean, I know, it's a hard one to start, I realize, but it can be done. We, we split it up.
Yeah, Wade Trim did all that about 2015, finished in 2016, and I think we paid about $1,700 to get them to do that. And they've changed everything, what the master plan that was done in 2012, and they changed our, changed the, you know, our.
Well, if we get the right info, Larry, Terry's gonna do that for that 500 bucks. That's what I said. That was just like a.
If you can get it down for 500, that's.
I did. Or she will.
She will.
Except for the printing. And she said, she's got a background in graphic art. So, if she has the information, she has the files.
She can incorporate.
She can do that.
Right. So, there's, these files, we have these files somewhere. We just have to find out where they're at.
Yes, we do.
That's the fun part.
Yes, it is.
So, I said, I'll talk to Doug, I'll talk to the planning commissioner from.
Great, that's a good start.
From Riley, that's our fire chief.
And I'll sure help out, but I want someone to take the lead on this one.
Yeah, I'll call them, and then I'll call, I'll call Riley Township. I got their number. And see if I can get some maps to, I need, to my contact people are at St. Clair County.
So, we definitely agree we need a zoning map, then we can say.
I think a zoning map would be a good thing, and then the.
What else? Let's get a. What else? Let's get a target of the maps that we need now. There's no reason to put this off.
I like the visionary, I like the visionary.
You see that vision map?
A vision of the city of the future.
Or future land use, they could call it that too.
Yeah, future land use.
So we can have different parts of it zoned differently, but labeled as a future land use to give some options. Like for instance, that piece we just bought last night or whatever, that could be a lot of different things back there.
Uh, it could absolutely.
So we can note that.
About three, about three and a half acres. Now the problem with that land of course is, uh, is the flooding issue.
Right. And who knows how it will evolve. They put a retention plan in, a developer might come buy an office for half a million dollars for that. I don't know. But we just, you know, we've got potential in different areas.
The flooding issue could be resolved by a retention pond and then a drainage coming out to the, uh, our main, um.
That would tie in very nicely.
Yeah, yeah.
Easily done if we wanted to, yeah.
Uh, when you, you say future land use, are you talking, a map, are you talking about vacant land that could be developed?
Anything, anything we desire. You know, whatever land we have here, if we look at it and say, you know, we've got a lot of open land on the north end of town a little bit. We have different spots. So, you know, anything that strikes your fancy, it'd be interesting. Make good reading in the master plan from somebody looking at it.
Doesn't that show some vacant land on there too? Or doesn't?
Uh, yeah, it's on, it's on the overlay of a satellite map. So, you know, south of the ponds and back in, in, uh, Barb's neighborhood, there's a lot of open land back there.
Let's just build on back of Barb's property.
Sure, go ahead.
Why not?
The church already did, sorry.
Right.
I think Tommy Cannon's owns that, doesn't he?
Yeah, same area. So a future land use or a vision map, whatever we want to call it. So we can look at.
Well, it'd be nice to know what acreage you have and what, uh, anyway.
Well, I can find, I think Amber can run those numbers for us.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, in fact, I asked her before, I don't remember exactly what, but the differentiation between, um, vacant land and abandoned land or, you know, there's a couple of different categories that she tracked there and she gave me some, some answers back. But again, so long ago, we just seemed to get in off all these different directions that I, you know, couldn't follow.
So you, of course, we want to update the zoning map. You were saying you're talking about future lawn of, uh, you know, vacant land for.
Land.
Land use.
Land use, yeah.
I know we have a lot of, what is it? We got like 160 acres north of town, something like that of ag, um, is it, is it zoned as ag?
Yeah, we got agricultural land. We got, you know, commercial land, designation, residential multiple, uh, residential one and 1A and 1B. Just a lot with really, I think.
That's the width of the lots, yeah.
Yeah, 6D, 175.
Yeah.
Yeah, not too many. We got like six or seven, I think, zonings. So those are two for sure ones, but what else? There was a couple of other little, just like street maps in, in the, in the master plan. It'd be nice just to have a, just a highway map, you know, something like that too.
Yeah, with the city boundaries, that would be a nice one.
Yeah, I can insert on it. So you can see what the road structure is like. Uh, so, you know, put that down.
Cause I know the one that's in there is kind of like off center.
Yeah, and Terry will, she'll make all that look good.
Yeah, with a clear mark of where M19, where our borders are at, that's a good.
Yeah, we can doctor these up, uh, any way we want. Infrastructure and transit. I don't know what this one really is. Well, that's, that's just the roadmap. And then it's good because it gets you the whole square of Memphis in one picture. That one Larry, I don't think it's really telling us anything.
21. Where am I? Oh, 22.
Was a nice visual of the surrounding countryside, just a little bit and the, and the city, how the city, you know, messes with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Pass it down Ken, I can take a look.
And, uh, city pictures. Yeah, like I said, we need to get those, uh.
And anybody who wants to take all the pictures you want and download them to Dropbox. She will look at them there and she's offered to take some too. But I, I ask her, uh, to look at, I know you took some good ones and.
I took an aerial shot.
Yeah. So send those, just get those all on Dropbox for, then once she's able to log into that, she'll have a ready-made live stock library to go to. And then we can decide if we want any particular, you know, shot for, uh, other things, you know? That, that'll be again, that'll be more of a fun part, easy part to do with the pictures and laying it out. But yeah, that's the map that, I like that.
I like that. It's a nice demographic. I, I mean.
Yeah, it shows the immediate surrounding area without being too zoomed out either. That's, that's interesting. So I'm going to call that.
Not very, this is not being very friendly to me.
Sat map, which one is that?
This is the commercial industrial zoning of right now.
Oh, okay.
We're at 160, let's try 175.
Well, some of them don't really have to be updated. You, they are, they're probably.
I don't know Larry.
You don't know.
But we, but I gotta have them so that I can get them to the person who is.
Yeah, okay.
Composing the document. That's, that's the thing. No, I mean, you're right. Well, it probably won't have to be some of them. But then again, like with satellite map, I saw a sat map in the city near, you know, we're, we're 10 years down the road. I'd rather have an up-to-date satellite map, picture that one that's 10 years old, you know, show. That was the kind of guy we started on this whole thing is we had 2010 census data.
Yeah, that was been updated. It shows 20.
By the time he's done with this, he's already in the middle of the second, you know, uh.
Before Ken Dunbar, he was, um, before Mr. Dunbar, um, moved on to bigger, better things.
There's no better and better things in here. Believe me, the planning commission is an extremely important foundation of city business state of place. You need people like this looking at what's going on to help this council make decisions. They don't have time to do all this. That's one of the things that we do.
Like that, I'm saying, it was nice that he became, and he's on the council, that's all. But he was the one that was really good at all this Dropbox and things like that. So having, having another individual that'll be able to help us with that is perfect.
Train somebody, find somebody, teach them. You're the guy that set it up.
Oh yeah, I set up Dropbox.
So I, I'll tell you guy. You man. Use your executive power and, and appoint someone to help you. Just point past me.
Point that friend.
Oh, who isn't here with us?
Who wasn't here today?
John Tarris.
John Tarris, John Locke.
Sign one of those guys to help with you on that really way. So if you have a task.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Locke is my, is the vice chair. So yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with him and just say, hey, I need some up on this.
Or if you get a few numbers, get him a couple of chase. I know Johnny would like to do that.
Oh yeah. John's very energetic.
And he's good. He knows municipalities and stuff too.
Yeah, especially the division he works for, yeah. He didn't come and cut my tree today, yeah.
So we got a zoning map, a vision, future land use map, city.
I like the aerial view. I like the aerial view here.
Sat map of city area. Yeah, I, I'd like to have that exactly on there except updated. That's four so far.
And you already got the street map. Um, pictures of, the pictures of the city.
Well, that's a different category. Let's just stay on maps.
On maps.
We can take photos of all, of all we want and figure that out.
Real classifications. You already have that one in there. I'm gonna see what else we have in there. This one doesn't necessarily. Current business district.
Yeah, and that was not accurate.
No, not even close. So we need an updated, um.
Yeah, that'd be a good, good map.
Current business district.
And satellite one, you know, for downtown business district. So people could see where all the main buildings and shops are. And maybe even do a legend and put some numbers on it and what's what.
Okay. That would be a good one.
So what do you call that one? Central business?
Yeah, this is CBD, central business district. Yeah, there it is right here. CBD. Central business district.
Okay.
Kind of shows what's there, but not there.
All right. So we got five so far. Oh, and, uh, the, uh, parcel maps for both sides. Whether we get numbers on it or not, we should at least get them where the parcels like the, the one I showed you from, um, McComb County, the one from St. Clair County, just parcel.
Parcel map.
Even if it was just the line drawings of the parcels. And then they get, at least bring that in. If we had a master map, they could match it up and find, pull the number off of that. But just to show the way the parcels are divided up in real estate considering, like, like the, to someone who's looking.
Yeah.
They don't need a lot in detail, but okay, that's a big enough piece and, you know.
Right. Just like the mill, how we split that up a couple of, um, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so you could just look at it and see.
Look at this. Okay, here's this, here's 10 acres, here's five acres.
Yeah, that would help out. But yeah, we were kind of confused on that when we first got.
A little bit. Yeah, I was a little bit lost on that one. But having that and having the, the, uh, the parcel dimensions.
That's, that's.
Well, I'm saying, no, just having the parcel number. I said with the map that they showed us.
Numbers is when you squeeze it down, that's what happens.
No, you're just, we're looking at the parcel number with the map with the parcel numbers on there. Then you can go to the register of deeds, look for that parcel and it'll give you the dimensions of the property.
But can you get that parcel number information on something that's this big? We've got 70 parcels on there. No, you can't.
No.
Even the one that's that big that I showed you from, uh, St. Clair, they blew that one up. You can barely see.
Yeah, that one was.
You almost need a mag, you could see them, but that's where, you know, a big one in the office, they could find it out as long as they could follow the geometric shape and they'd find it on there pretty easy, I think. All right. So I'm going to add parcel maps from McComb, St. Clair County.
And we can get those from the county.
Yep.
I wonder if those are online.
They are.
They are online?
St. Clair is really good. Um, they, they have an entire program. You can cooperate out and look at it, but McComb's a little more than a few.
I wandered around a little long time and finally get to the right closet. Yeah. So yeah, it's good suggestion. There might be a lot of them. You probably could find them. Depending on how big your weapons.
Give me a list. I'll give me something to do on Saturday.
All right.
And you got it written down. Just send it to me in a message or something and.
Send you what?
All these here. I'll, I'll write.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Cause that way then I'll sit down on Saturday.
Yep.
Maybe I'll send the camera with the heater and just.
Any other suggestions? Ken, you got anything?
No, you guys are covering it pretty good.
Larry, anything pops up for a map?
I don't know. No, I, I'm a little, um, no, I'm, I'm kind of new on this a little bit, what you're doing. So it's going to take me a little time to get up to speed.
Yeah, oh, that's cool. Okay. No, I value your input. Just the basics what was in there before.
Well, I'll probably give you a call too.
Well, we got, we got six, that's, that's, we only got both six from them. You have them came.
I think, I think that's a good start.
And meanwhile, we, we can always add.
Always add. And then. I said with the pictures, you know, moving on with that with the, with the.
Maybe a good idea incorporate your parks and your proposed recreational areas.
Yeah, green spaces.
Wouldn't that be future land use?
Well, existing too.
Existing too, yeah, existing park.
Lions, museum park, uh, recreational.
School park.
Do we have anything marked for ORVs? Cause I know they can't run down M19, but I have, I have friends and I have neighbors that have ORVs.
Can't run it in 19. Can't do it. You can't run it in.
Right. But if there's like a set, you know, like, see, we have a map that says ORV. This is the best ORV way to get around the city. Cause you can't draw it down M19 unless it's registered.
Please, you can make that one up if you want. I had no interest in that at all.
All right. I'll, I'll figure something out. I'll talk with a couple.
Yeah, he tied trails and that's part of his grant we were looking at last week for the, uh, parts of rep. Signage, you know, and it kind of falls under that, that umbrella.
Cause I, like I said, I have a few friends that I have, one guy that lives out in Riley Center. I have another friend that lives in Burnside. And he's got a registered side by side, you know, four passenger. And they've driven it down the Addison corridor and ended up at Sage Creek. He'll call me up, hey, we're at Sage Creek. So it, you know, but with definitive signs somewhere or at least some type of path or whatever else. I know you can drive on Sage Creek, but.
See, the more information we get in, the better. Cause I don't want to revisit this again.
No, but it's, um.
Even in two years. We should review it, but we could let it, we don't necessarily have to.
Right.
We're so close to rolling five years ago. I don't like what we're close to reviewing, you know?
And.
We'll be doing every five years in a row. Five years Larry, is that?
Five, five years.
From the, like from the last time that you did it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. You don't, because we miss a few years, you don't have no catch.
So we.
Every five, every five years, that's the destiny that should be reviewed.
So we published this in 25, then we made it easy on everybody. It's 30, 35, 40.
Yeah, you're just starting this when I was, uh, got off the planning commission. You're.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you're just starting.
Yeah, I was still.
That's two years. So you've been working on it about two years already.
Over two years.
Well, over two years, yeah.
Since I've, since I've been on.
So, uh, so you don't have to go five years from two years ago. You go five years when this is.
Where it's finished.
When it's completed, right.
Yeah. So that'd be a big thing out of the way. You won't have that business to deal with anymore. Just take a long time.
Good.
Yeah. What would you talk?
All right. Pictures, if anybody wants to take pictures.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to text them to, you can text them to me, email them. And then I can, uh.
Good. That makes it easy. I'll, I'll do that if I.
Yeah, if he takes, takes a picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know, whoever wants to do.
Whoever wants, even, even resident, take a picture, email it or text it to them.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind putting it out in the city somehow.
Yeah, take some pictures of our city and send them to me. Or at least the, you know, the, um, the planning commission email. And then I can bring them in the Dropbox and leave them for our.
Whenever, why don't you give us a solid address? Like, you know, I'll collate them up your own mail or. Let's, cause if we publish it, make sure it's going to stay that way and maybe that would be the best.
There, there is a, it's, um, the email is memphisplanning@currently.com. Let me see. Let me make sure.
It sounds right.
Sounds about right. I have it written down, I think.
Yeah, cause if I take pictures, I'll send them to that.
Yeah, send them to me.
It's Memphis Planning.
I believe it. Yep. It's, uh, memphisplanning@currently.com.
At what?
At currently.
Currently.
Currently, not, not pastly, you know, not futurely, but currently.
That's C U R R E N T.
L Y dot com. Yeah, send it there. So Jim, Amber, Eric, if you have, you know, nice pictures, send them to the memphisplanning@currently.com and I'll download it.
Yeah, I'll be watching out there.
Send me, send me the list of your maps that you want. Cause a lot of that stuff when I'm going around, cause I have to do drawings, psych drawings.
I'll give you a list.
Yeah, thank you. I might be able to buzz through some of that stuff in hours and get it at least to a point where it can get turned over to somebody else with.
You have templates.
I do it all in scale. I can do it all in scale and send it to her and then she can work it back down and do those up or something.
That'd be fantastic. I'll take you up on that.
Just send it to me.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, you're fine.
Um, I can send a email to McComb County's, uh, planning division department, um, that's in, I'm trying to think, Mount Clemens. Um, that's probably where you were at, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it was the old county building.
Yeah, they should, they should have PDFs of all of them. So if you want, I can send an email to them and see if they do have that.
That'd be great. Appreciate it.
I don't know if they would charge to release that, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Then, all right.
Lots of things just for the GIS.
Oh, okay.
And parcel, and psych plan, send back in for training and stuff. So. McComb's pretty active. I'm not familiar with St. Clair's, but what you're showing on St. Clair is pretty accessible. You said it's all the same.
Yeah, I, I used to work in St. Clair County. They, they, their online system is so much better than McComb's.
I got through them a lot easier than I did with McComb. They're, they're very helpful.
Yeah, McComb's just a little long.
They're still slow.
They're just slow.
That's why I said it to you, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, McComb I think is bigger than St. Clair.
Okay. So pictures for Tom, you mean, get us that at memphisplanning@currently.com?
Yes.
Okay. I'll get your address too.
Okay. And I said, I have an aerial shot and it's not the greatest. Like I said, I was just messing up my drone.
I liked it.
Oh, thank you. I have the drone. Just can't take it off in front of the house. Cause I'll hit something, always will. And I'll be out a $300 drone. So, all right, moving on. Anything else to add on that for the master plan? Would go there for, for the list, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, the next time we meet, I'm going to bring up, I don't have those points. I've split them off of this plan somewhere, but there were two different pages of like things to do, bullet points on the last master plan that was published. We've done a couple of them. Uh, one was the commercial district language.
Yes.
I had that authored then. So I'm going to, I will make a list of those and bring that to the next meeting. And we need to jump on that and get that out of the way. to the next meeting, we need to jump on that and get that out of the way.
Yeah, the commercial.
Yeah, that, that should check all the boxes of things that we really need to make sure are done on this plan.
So, what's that Steve, you're listing what now you're gonna do?